Hey David, if I was thinking realistically, I'd done the same thing. Hey, out there. Yes, sir. I don't think he's ready. Hey, out there. Ready, 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 one, two, three. Okay, those are now, just some mirrors out there. Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We're coming out of recess. Everybody's ready to go? We got a call. Okay, let me see where we were. Page two. Consent agenda, the following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda, the chairman will provide opportunity to add or delete items. Anybody have anything they want to add or delete? Haven't here none. Public safety, resolution approving acceptance of the governor's office of highway safety grant an amount of sixty thousand nine hundred eleven dollars thirty-four cents for a heat program. Parks and Recreation, resolution to approve shooting simulated artillery and simulated gunfire at a special event at Nash Farm, November the eleventh through the thirteenth, twenty sixteen. Transit, a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty seventeen Georgia Department of Transportation fifty-three-one-one Rural Transportation Program Supplemental Agreement Number One for capital improvement assistance for Henry County Transit. That ends the consent. Does somebody move we approve the consent resolutions as read?
So moved.
Have motion District Three.
Second.
Second District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Splash, resolution regarding the bid for milling and resurfacing of five county roads in Henry County. Rocky Romero.
Good evening Chairman and Board members. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department per bid number seventeen dash twelve for the milling and resurfacing of five roads in Henry County. Six seal bids were received and reviewed. E.R. Snell Contractor, Inc. provided the low bid of one million one hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred eleven dollars and fifty cents. The five roads slated for milling and resurfacing are located in District Four and funded through S plus four, S plus four funds. The roads are Old Conyers Road, Flat Rock Road, Banks Road, Ty Road, and Crumbly Road. Staff recommends awarding the bids number seventeen dash twelve for milling and resurfacing of the above mentioned roads to E.R. Snell Contractor, Contractor, Inc. In addition, this resolution also authorized the county manager or his destiny to approve changes less than fifty thousand.
Anybody have any comments or questions? I yield the floor to District Four.
Thanks Chairman. When I campaigned for this seat, I actually campaigned on transportation. And one of the things we have to look at, when we have roads that are in disrepair, it is very important to repair them in a timely manner. This, it seems a lifetime ago, but if you remember this winter, this past winter, it rained and rained and rained and rained and rained. And we started getting issues with a lot of potholes in our roads. And it got to a point that we were having trouble keeping up with even keeping all the potholes filled. So I made it a point to go through my district, find roads that were in need, find the money, and to repave as much roads as I could with the money that we had available. So, you know, I appreciate you putting this together for me, Rocky. And if you look on the list, it's Old Conyers Road, Flat Rock Road, Banks Road, which is, that's inside the city limits? Is that part?
It's, it's very close to it.
Because it goes, Banks is not in the city for a minute, then it goes back in.
Right, it's very close, it's right next to it.
Then, I did have a question. You have Ty Road here, shouldn't it be Ty Street?
I'm, I'm, yes, sorry, it should be Ty Street.
Let's change it. That's Ty Street, that is inside the city, Stockbridge. And Crumbly Road, and we all know over by the bank building on Crumbly Road, it's, there's a lot of potholes and a lot of things. So I tried to move some of the money around to take care of the different areas of the district. And it's greatly needed, and I hope this works out for everyone. But thanks for getting this to me, Rocky.
Thank you, sir.
And with that, I'd like to move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the resolution Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for milling and resurfacing of five county roads in Henry County. Have a motion, have a second from District Five. All in favor, if there's any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Resolution to amend Chapter Twelve, Section one-two-point-zero-two-point-zero-six-H, permit for timber removal in accordance with Section twelve-point-zero-two-point-one-one and twelve-point-zero-three-point-zero-zero of the Henry County Uniform Land Development Code. Mr. Patterson, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Just give you a brief history. Several years ago, around two thousand and six, the county revamped our timbering permit to be more transparent. Some of the issues were, were the difference between grading and timbering. And some litigation happened, and that's when staff got together for six months and put together the county timbering permit requirements. Some of the items that we placed in this document was a requirement for a forestry management plan, which states what the intent of the property is for the, for the timbering, for its common management of timbering every fifteen years or every twenty years, those type items. Erosion control plan also submitted. Last year, twenty fifteen, the Georgia legislator adopted a unified timbering permit requirement across the board, because every jurisdiction had their own program in, in play. Some of the items, we're not gonna go through the whole documents, but some, some of the items that, that is key in this, in this program, it actually talks about a twenty-four hour initial, initial point of contact prior to starting the timber requirements, providing a map to sketch out the location. No county cannot require any permit fees, which the building department didn't require a permit fee. The permit fee requirement was only to get out on county roads. And now, in this new Georgia law, that, that has been eliminated. I'm gonna show you a copy of the new permit requirement. And I can stand before you with conversations with our environmental protection divisions. A lot of people in, in erosion control is not happy with this plan, but this is what the Georgia legislator voted on, and this would go into effect immediately. So basically, it'll just be a sketch site plan, name of, name of a property owner, the timbering company, point of contact, total acreage, and that's, that's about it for the timbering permit requirements. Once we receive this document, it's approved, and it will go over to the tax assessor, because the property owner will be assessed tax on removing timber on that property. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Somebody move we approve resolution to amend Chapter Twelve, Section twelve-point-zero-two-point-zero-six-H, permit for timber removal of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code.
So moved.
Have a motion District Three. Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Same sign if you disapprove it. Resolution authorizing the purchase of twelve vehicles and to amend fiscal year seventeen building budget amendment to use fund balance. George, again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring before you the, the request to purchase twelve vehicles, which will complete the building department fleet. We have already currently ordered and, and are using the tablets. In these vehicles, these tablets will eventually be mounted inside of the truck, which will speed up the process of, of issuing the permits and having inspections.
Anybody got any questions? We have a question from District Five. I yield the floor.
George, we know that your department produces significant revenue for the county. Can we safely say that these vehicles will be funded by that revenue?
Yes, our, our last year budget exceeded one point two million over what was projected.
Any other questions? If not, I yield the floor. Anybody who wants to make a motion to approve resolution, Board of Commissioners authorizing purchase of twelve vehicles for the Building and Plan Review Department and the Associated Budget Amendment. Have a motion District Three. Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution to replace and admit server room air conditioning battery backup equipment to replace the annex server room air conditioner equipment and install a backup generator.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Item before you, I believe, would be considered a joint effort between facilities and technology to allow us to replace the air conditioners and UPS system in the main server rooms located here in this administrative building. The AC and UPS located in this building were installed approximately the same time this building was constructed, and I believe nineteen ninety-eight. They've certainly outlived their life expectancy by several years, and we really need to get them replaced. This will also give us redundant air conditioning in this server room, which we do not have now, by placing three separate units that communicate with each other, in case one goes down, the other one picks up. So we will have redundancy built in here, plus the brand-new UPS in that room. The disaster recovery site, which is located off-site here, this basically grew out of necessity. It was borrowed space, a couple of offices that were tied together with some residential air conditioning systems. We're gonna replace those two air conditioners systems with a redundant, proper server room air conditioning systems, install a much-needed backup generator at the disaster recovery site, and of course, split the two, take the two ACs that are in there out and replace them with the standard server room systems. The board approved the transfer of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the General Fund One Hundred to Capital Assets Fund Three Fifty-One via Resolution sixteen dash two-seventy for the purchase and installation of this equipment. The equipment would be bought through Gray Bar Electric using U.S. Communities Contract M.A.-I.S.-one-three-four-zero-two-three-four in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if you have any questions, I'd be-
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is the, doing first major step that the board approved some months back towards the ERP and the public safety software updates. We have spent a lot of money inside that server room this year with air conditions going down and waters pumping. So the board looked at this last year. You capitalized some work and some monies for us to go ahead and pursue this. This is really the first step, getting the room ready for the new hardware, for the new software, for the new applications. So many, many steps to go yet, but this is the first one that gets us the, the building that we have here, ready for these computer upgrades that you've authorized.
We spent a lot of money on the IT department this year. I don't anticipate seeing you much next year, correct?
Sir?
As I said, I don't anticipate seeing you much next year, because we spent a lot of money on your-
Maybe, maybe a couple more meetings, and then after that, I'll disappear into the woodwork.
Commissioner Holmes, this used to be, every time I'd see Skip, it was five hundred thousand dollars. It's now gone up.
He calls me the half-million-dollar man, so.
But I, I think the board, this was an investment we talked about last year, so it's just the first step in it. I wanted y'all to know that this is a significant step, which y'all planned on for over a year now. Well, just remember too, this particular server room controls the entire county, everything. We have no redundant air conditioning, and the air conditioners were installed in ninety-eight. I, I do not sleep well at night thinking of these air conditioners. And trust me, I know facilities, it's been here Christmas Day, New Year's Day, we were all here. Air conditioners were off, servers were down. Thankfully, nobody was here. It's happens on a fairly regular basis when these go out. It's the only air conditioner in, in the room. So this is much, much needed and way overdue, so anyway.
Any further comments? If not, somebody move in that direction.
Move.
Somebody, District One moves to accept the resolution.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Human Resources, resolution to adopt employee wellness initiative, the A CCG Health Promotion and Wellbeing Grant and amending the twenty seventeen grant fund. Ms. Patterson, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman, Commissioners. Item sixteen A is a resolution to adopt the Employee Wellness Initiative. The Association of County Commissioners of Georgia is sponsoring a health promotion program to assist in establishing and improving workplace health and wellness programs. With that said, they are granting Henry County fifteen thousand dollars to help plan and promote these programs. Also, Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Georgia is providing a reimbursable wellness fund in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, which can be used to promote health and wellness programming. These programs include wellness fairs, which we actually just had one last week, also benefits fairs, and several other initiatives, which the county will be taking part in during the year. Lunch and learns, EAP seminars, hikes and related exercise events, benefits fairs, flu shots, instructors for wellness programs, incentives, health coaching, cooking classes, and other educational programs and incentives. So I ask that you will please adopt the resolution as presented.
Anybody having any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution to book for the Henry County Board of Commissioners adopting the Employee Wellness Initiative, the A CCG Health Promotion and Wellbeing Grant and amend the twenty seventeen grant fund. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion District Five. Have a second from District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution adopting the FLSA twenty sixteen Classification Overtime Compensation Rules and Authorization to Conduct Classified and Compensated Analysis.
Good evening again. The U.S. Department of Labor has implemented new FSLA, which is Fair Labor Standards Act, which is to be effective as of twelve-one of twenty sixteen, which raises the salary threshold of employees to receive overtime pay, and it also restates the exemption requirements for position classifications. With this new law, full-time employees that earn less than forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars will be classified as non-exempt employees and eligible to receive overtime compensation for hours worked over forty per week, or by mutual agreement with the employee. The said employees may receive comp time at time and a half of hours worked over forty hours per week. In cases, however, where the duties test maintain that an employee should be classified as exempt, for example, as a manager or a manager level or above position, those employees must be raised to the minimum threshold dollar amount, which is forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars for exempt employees, or they must be changed to non-exempt employees. Because of this new rule, we're also asking that a classification compensation analysis be completed, so that we can analyze all position classifications to ensure that the county positions are properly classified as required by the Fair Labor Standards Act. And until this is completed in fiscal year twenty seventeen, the current classification framework will be amended to reflect the changes as needed. So we're asking that you adopt the resolution as presented.
Would this analyzation be, be done in-house?
No, sir. We actually have a, an RFP to secure services to do it, professional consultants.
How much will that cost us? Do you know that yet?
I don't know offhand, but somewhere less than a hundred thousand dollars. I understand that funds have been approved in previous years to complete this.
So once you bring that back, the board, the board will have to vote on that?
Yes, sir. The funding.
Is that something you can do in-house? The reason I say this, that forty-seven four seventy-six, that's, that's the law. It's gonna be law. We can't skirt around it. We've got to do it. We are gonna do it, but we, we can't do that in-house to, to determine who's making less than forty-seven four seventy-six, or who's making more?
No, sir. The classification compensation analysis is not for that purpose. We know who's making less than forty-seven thousand. I have that information available if you'd like to see it.
What, what, what are they gonna analyze? Would it, would it be to comply with the federal law?
Absolutely. Part of what this law requires is that we have our positions classified properly, whether they're exempt or non-exempt. I will tell you right now, we have some positions that are classified as non-exempt or exempt that will need to be changed. And so we do need to have professionals to come in, which most counties have already done this. We're a little bit behind the eight ball, and we'll tell you that, to make sure that our positions are classified professionally, yes.
That's what I was gonna say. I was at a meeting months ago, and counties were already implementing this. I mean, we're a month and a half out, and we're just getting started. So I guess with that said, how is that gonna impact us? And how is it gonna, I mean, it looks like we're gonna have to increase our budget, because a lot of our public safety personnel work, they, they work overtime.
Actually, most, most of the public safety personnel that fall into this category are currently listed as non-exempt, so it does not increase the budget for them, because they're already receiving overtime.
So who exactly will be listed as exempt under this new law?
I can give you this list, if you would like to see the people that are in specific positions that will be affected.
Okay. How many people are on the list?
Right now, we have twelve positions that are actually occupied.
Okay. You can just give me a copy after the meeting, that'd be fine.
Okay. Does anyone else want to see it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No. Having said that, somebody move in this direction to approve this resolution.
So move.
Have a motion District Five.
Second.
Second from District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Pro the minutes September nineteenth, twenty sixteen, joint meeting with the Board of Elections, October the fourth, twenty sixteen, BLC regular meeting. Does somebody move, we accept these minutes as published.
So moved.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second District One, Four, and Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Chairman has no comments. I'll start with District One. You have any comments?
No, sir.
District Three.
No comments.
District Four.
Yes, sir. Do have a comment. I'd like to talk to the public real quick about Station Eight. It's Fire Station Eight. I got the structural analysis today, and I hadn't really had time to dig into it too too deep, but I want to read one portion of the report. In our opinion, due to the defects listed above, the building should be considered structurally unsound and not to be occupied. Looked at the building, looked at the repairs, looked at what we need to do to fix the building. It, it's a total loss. I, I don't see any way to fix this building. The back retaining wall is just structurally unsound, the floor system is structurally unsound, there's problems with air quality there. I'm going to, with the board's permission, of course, instruct county manager to immediately, and as an emergency, tear that building down, get temporary structures there ASAP, and then we'll look at where to build a new fire station in that area, and we'll have to, I don't think right there is gonna work. There's not stopping site distance coming in and out of there, so we'll have to look for a different area. But again, with the, the board's permission, I would like to give the county manager instructions to move on this immediately, as, as an emergency. Does any of the other board concur or object?
I, I just got the report tonight. I hadn't really had a chance to look it over, but, but if we've got a building unsafe, we definitely need to take care of it.
Yep, yep.
I would like Chief Minister to come up and tell us more about the fire station. Let us know if it can be rehabbed. Do we have to demolish the building? What can we do to ensure that we're providing fire service from that location moving forward?
We currently have Engine Eight at Rock Quarry Road at Station Nine, and Rescue Eight is at Station Three on forty-two. They're responding from there near Eagle signing Parkway.
Is it possible to refurbish the building? Is, I mean, are there investments we can make to, to have it operational for anybody to be in it, or is it what Commissioner Prince said?
Mr., Mr. Purvis would have to answer that, as far as the building goes. We, we did look at temporary housing on the lot that we own there, that will allow the, the companies to be in their immediate territory and respond from, from the same location until the long-range planning can be made about the building.
Because I didn't know that the fire station was shut down. Did any commissioner, okay.
We talked about it as a group.
Well, we, we talked about, you know, doing some repair work on the fire station, but we didn't talk about actually closing the station down, and I didn't hear about-
You were correct when Chief Willis called and let me know, listen, she had a reservation about people building there. We aired on the side of caution. We moved everybody out and started making plans of how to provide services to that location. To ask you your question about the rehab, the estimated rehab cost of that is about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars was there. My problem with that, which you've heard me talk about at Phillips Drive and all these other buildings we've been talking about, is we really are not looking for a fix. We need to be looking at these things that are, we're gonna invest in. They need to be the thirty or forty-year pieces. Right now, it takes us about two-point-three to two-point-four million dollars to build our current prototype, a firehouse. At, whether it's at this location or not, is to be determined later. But when the chief called and said that she wants to move those people out, I supported that. We moved them out. We got the engineering analysis on it, and then simultaneously, we've been working out how to figure where the temporary locations would be. So we got a cost estimates in your book about the rehab cost. I'll give you some more information about a construction cost, but if I appreciate what Commissioner Prince is telling me, the board has been asked for me to go ahead and get the temporary shelters, the personnel facility, as well as the apparatus storage. And that works out to be about a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's the problem that I have. Phillips Drive isn't a fire station, and you know-
Oh, I, just, yes, sir.
Yeah, that fire station covers a number of areas in that particular, I mean, it covers part of my district, covers part of District Four, covers part of District Two. So what was the cost to have that fire station operational? Because I, I, I think instead of having it shut down, I mean, I think I, I would be okay with moving forward with funding whatever is needed to get that fire station back up and running.
It's the location. Now, if you wanted to spend the two-twenty-seven or thereabouts as an estimate for construction cost, we still have to account for that temporary location. We want to move those folks back to Station Eight's site, but not occupy the building. So we're looking at renting two temporary structures, one for the apparatus and one for the personnel. That has a one-time cost for the construction in, in those pieces of it, and I think that's what Commissioner Prince is authorizing or suggesting that we do. I've, I've got some breakouts to it to give you an idea what we're looking at. We're gonna have to purchase a building. We're gonna have to annually lease one. We're gonna have to pour a slab, and in all that, that puts everybody back at the station very quickly, as soon as I get these things up, at that location, but not in that building. Then the options are to go ahead and rehab or to demolish it based off of the economic considerations the board would look at. But it does put it back in that location. And to address a point that I think, I talked to one of the candidates this week, there was a notion that, and we talked about in my comments in the paper, that we were looking at another location, exactly as Commissioner Prince put it. We need to optimize the traffic patterns. Right now, that road backs up, and we don't have good access to come out. So in talking to you this afternoon, we just, we're not moving in out of the district. We wanna stay in the strike zone that gives us the response time we're looking for. And the temporary status or the temporary structures at this site will get us back to having that site located while we work out the rest of the logistics, whether we go back to that site, whether we find another site, how we're gonna secure the funding to build the next thing, or repair this thing. But our intent always was, first things, let's find out what we've got. We rush this engineering study assigned by an engineer, and I, I've made the comment off several places now, that it's a temporary, in a, temporary consideration in an abundance of caution. So we're ready to move forward if the board is inclined to-
You're not, you're not recommending that we buy more property when we own property there, correct?
At this point in time, that is not on my agenda, yes, sir. We own property, it has- We own property, it has limitations in itself, but right now, the idea is to get this station location back so that we have the similar response times we had before. We've been very fortunate with the geographic spacing of the other stations, that our response times have been minimally increased, and we've had no issues with it so far. But our, the board's commitment would be to tell me, let's go ahead and get this location rehabbed as quick as possible for temporary housing and temporary apparatus storage.
So have we started the process?
Yes, sir. We've got the pricing, we've made some contracts, we've still got to do some procurement steps to make sure we order everything, but we had to come with y'all with some preliminary numbers now to know where at.
Which steps, which steps, which steps are needed to move forward?
Right now, I would need authorization for the board to let me go ahead and contract at an emergency basis to obtain a temporary structure for the apparatus and do the construction of pouring a slab and bringing the mobile units for personnel on. Now, whether we would do it at the upper part of the lot or the lower lot, we don't wanna feel any issues with any construction or demolition that may be going on that building down the road. So we're probably up, coming in off of Vincent Road, is that correct?
Vincent.
Oh, thank you. That house is there, we purchased that some time back, you had two parcels that are assembled there, but what's misleading there from Flipping Road and going uphill, it's a huge rise. The, the elevation change from where the driveway is to your current station going up there is twelve or fourteen feet. So what we'd probably do is do all that we can do, we can demolition the first house, and we can set up there, and I appreciate it, Chief Willis, that was a consideration that you were looking at last week. So, we've got a place that we can make it functional and get those two apparatus and the personnel back to this station while we sort out what has to happen with the existing station. At the same time, I would certainly look at what of the locations may be more advantageous and seeing what kind of building we could locate. Our prototype building now might be a little too long, if you would, to be on that frontage, but the biggest compromise is how the traffic backs up on Flipping Road, and I don't want that for our, our stations, we wanna be able to get in and out very quickly.
Chief, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is the temporary facility for the, the personnel and get them back into their, their territory, their first-along territory. According to Mr. Purvis, that can be accomplished in about six weeks. Am I correct?
Six, eight weeks.
Six, eight weeks. And he's talking about...
Are you in a call audition, Tom?
Go ahead.
Thank you. How far is it from Station Eight? You relocated to Station Nine, correct?
Engine Eight is, is housed at Station Nine on Rock Quarry Road.
How far are they apart, the two stations?
I don't, I, I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, when, when you relocated them to Station Nine, moved the firefighters to Station Nine?
Yes, sir. We had to use two stations because we could not accommodate the, the beds at, at both, I would've put them both at Station Nine had we had the room, but I put the, the rescue over at Station Three because we didn't have enough beds at Station Nine.
Okay, so that, if they get a call in that flipping location, they operate from Station Nine and Station Three?
Yes, sir. They'll be responding from that location until we can move them back.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? I yield for District Four.
Thank you, Chairman. Just so we're all clear, we're all moving forward right now. The, the other part I wanted to point out with this building, there's some air quality issues, and key point, don't build bunks above fire trucks. The exhaust fumes, not a good idea, we don't do that anymore. Again, this was built by volunteers back in the eighties, and this, the building is in terrible repair, it's just not worth fixing, but let's try to get that time down. Hutch, I mean, we, we can get a building here quick, pour a slab in a couple of days.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it, we can get this thing turned around pretty quick, so let's, let's jump on that.
We will.
We have a resolution to approve funding.
Your, your vote, a resolution would be nice, but it's your affirmative vote, let me make the emergency expenditures necessary, and I, I would ask for at least, give me a latitude for about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, if I go over that for the year, I'm sorry, that's our one-year cost, our estimated cost for the, one-seventy-five-nine-something, wasn't it? And that was for the whole year. I'm right now just wanting to get us on-site and get us back, I won't spend any more than an half to, but I don't wanna have to come back in the middle of a, a session, particularly with the holidays coming up. I will keep the board apprised of every nickel I spend on a daily basis if we go on expenditure, and I will certainly touch base with the Chairman, make sure he is okay with my signature on it, if that's the case, or I'll run one of the other commissioners down if you'd like a co-signature.
And we're still well, well above the twenty-five percent of fund balance?
Yes, sir, we are.
I would be okay with moving to approve the one-seventy-five, if that's okay with the Chairman.
I didn't quite hear that. What, what about the twenty-five percent fund balance?
We...
I heard you say that. I know y'all just came from the conference. What, what did that organization indicate that the fund balance should be for County ours, I ask?
Mr. Chairman, that was a very interesting conversation. I felt like you had talked to the mediator, 'cause he was looking me dead in the eyes when this conversation came up.
That's, that's the people that, that we trust to, to give us recommendations on fund balance, right?
Yes, sir.
The financial organization?
That's, that's one of the many, but the board actually adopts it.
Okay. What, what did, what did, what did they recommend?
Well, the conversation is, I asked specifically because we danced around it, and the answer was, it depends. But there were many variations in there, in particular for us, it has to do with your timing of the cycle. When we have our fiscal year makes a difference of it, there were several variables that we went over on them, but you asked for a report on that, and someone reminded me that, they, so I'm going back and looking at the seventy-some pages of notes I have of that three-day conference, and I'm gonna pull those four things that were the primary drivers for it. But the most, the biggest consideration I saw for Henry County is that it is the primary time of year. When is your calendar year start and stop? And that seems to affect as much as anything in some of the counties. We're not in such bad shape, but you do know that because of the taxes that are paid, as we go through the year, we do have fluctuations in that fund balance amount. What we have done this year, as we were smart enough last year, and Board of County Commissioners worked with us, we put seventeen million dollars back into that piece. Now we're working off of that to get some of the capital things you wanted and some of these things that have popped back up, so we're taking it down. The biggest one is I did two-point-one million dollars a few weeks ago to satisfy our court requirement. My commitment was to get this money back, Mr. Tony is banging on his desk tonight, making certain that reimbursement, we get that money back in as just as short as possible, no more than thirty days. So as our number fluctuates in fund balance, it may get down to nine or so million dollars or not, but we're gonna stay in that cushion, and so far for the year, and I'll defer to Mr. Letta, as there's no time in the year, this year, that the, that will be in the CAFR that says we went below the twenty-five percent threshold.
Do we, do we have two-point-two million? We do, why don't we build a new station up there and replace...
Well, you very well may, Commissioners, I, I, I'm not gonna tell you, but this, we're, we're ways from making a determination...
The citizen up there deserves a new station, I mean, that right there's been dilapidated and put it...
We just gotta get something there temporary, so I'm, I think we get off...
Let's leave the subject here, is this a matter of public safety, and I, I don't think we need to get off subject, if we could stay on subject, please. I'd like to make a motion to allow County Manager to do emergency...
You have a motion.
Repair...
You have a motion.
Good. Oh, you seconded?
No, you seconded.
Would, would you repeat, make the dollar amount, how, how much did you motion on?
One-seventy-five.
One-seventy-five?
What's your recommendation?
I'll second.
One-seventy-five going one, one-seventy-five going twice. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
County Manager, do you have any additional comments?
A, a couple.
Okay.
Imagine that. Board, I'm trying to set up with ACCG for y'all's first visioning and retreat. Right now, I've had an opportunity to talk with the representatives who provide those types of backup and mediation services, so I'm looking right now, and I'll be calling you tomorrow and trying to schedule some times, I'll give you the dates that we currently got, and looking at when you're doing. It will be in the January and February timeframe, which I know we won't have the benefit of some of our seated Commissioners.
I will not be here, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why would you do it?
It was asking me, before y'all hired me, that it gives you an opportunity to sit down with each other, look at the vision that you are there, and establish some goals and objectives that the Board of County Commissioners would like to see over the next period. Yes, we've been doing real well this year as far as meeting the fires and putting those out, but the long-term discussions and how the board learns how to work with each other, I think it would be beneficial, and I think I recommended that the first time you met.
Consultant.
Sir?
Can we put an executive session?
Um, not an executive session, no.
You have to call a meeting.
All right.
You can do a meeting and sit around a table and talk all day.
But this is guided, we've, we've got some specific input we'd like the board to look at and give us some directions. We're bringing some professionals in to show you what other counties have done, show you what the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities that Henry County may have before, and as much as anything, I think it's gonna give the, the board an opportunity to work together in a way other than it's at the dais, where you can work out these relationships. We've got a big year in front of you.
It was called an intergovernmental retreat, and that was with the chamber and the municipalities and the county, so I mean...
Did all of y'all go?
We were all invited.
Well, this requires you to be there, this is your meeting as specific to the Henry County Board of County Commissioners, and their input and some of the strategies that come into that, very well may guide y'all's input. I, I feel pretty strongly about this, Commissioners, I want y'all to really consider, if you'd let not to go, I think it would, it, it'd slow us down a little bit, but I'm recommending you do it. I think you'll come away from that, as it has been with every group I've ever taken to a visioning session, you come away with that stronger, and you have a better sense of what you can do for Henry County, and I want that for you folks. I'll get some schedules together, and we'll be talking to you before the end of the week, I hope I can get this one nailed down.
You know what would be great? If we can sit down with Joe DeCo and get that project going ASAP. I mean, we're talking about ten to twenty million dollars in tax revenue, I think that would be the start, and we, I don't think we need to retreat to do that, do we?
Joe DeCo is a specific project, and it's a one-time shot here. I've gotta look further down the road. This board has heard me say over and over, when we adopt a budget the next day, we forget about it. Your pathway is right now, we've given you a five-year capital plan, now we're working on a five-year operational plan. I'd like the board to look thirty-five and forty years down, so we don't get us in this backlog of deferrals, and we can weather the, some of the storms that are coming our way relative to finances and our econo-, our economy.
I just don't like to waste a lot of time, so that's where I am.
I understand. We won't waste your time, Mr. Holmes.
Oh, no.
I couldn't hear him either.
Oh, sorry.
That's why, he said, I, I, I heard that twenty-five percent fund balance, so I heard that, I picked that. Go ahead with your second item.
Commissioners, we will, we've kicked off, as you know, the judicial analysis, space analysis going on. Next week, on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, I will be with the team coming down that are consultants that have been hired to start working on the survey analysis and the actual space and content analysis for this report. You know, I, I believe this will probably end up being one of Henry County's largest capital projects down the road. We've got a, I think it's sixteen or twelve weeks we've gotta work out it. We are a little bit ahead of the game on the admin side, we provided all the documentation necessary for the spring board, if you will, for the on-site visit. They have today sent some survey data to us, it's a response back, but for next week, on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, you'll find me over at the courthouse with Mr. Simmons, representing this side of the team, and we're going to start this analysis and bring it back to you. At some date, probably in January, the Board of County Commissioners and the judicial representatives, we'll have to have a meeting. We want to be able to show you what we have found, what we're thinking, giving you some alternatives, and let you actually talk to the decision-makers on that side and let them hear your strategy of what law enforcement and what the judicial system needs to look like in fifty years in Henry County. Also scheduling tomorrow, I want y'all to be prepared for groundbreaking on your May, I'm sorry, on your November first meeting. We are prepared, and I'll bring a bus up, and we finish, we'll take you out to the airport and do the airport threshold displacement and the Olive, Olive Road, road construction. Sir?
We got to land?
We are in possession by virtue of a court mechanism...
Condemnation.
Condemnations.
We own the property, yes.
So, we're prepared and ready for the commission, and a long-awaited, I'm gonna put some shovels on your hands and a hard hat on your head, take some pictures of you, we're gonna go out on my Olive Road and take some photographs, and I'll bring you back here by bus, then we'll release you.
Keep in mind, some people up here ain't that happy about it.
Well, I thought you were all ecstatic according to what I've been talking to you.
I'm, I'm not happy about it, but anyway, we're gonna do Phase Two, 'cause we, we either do Phase Two or we have to pay for Phase One.
And that's all I have for you, Commissioners, but we'll provide transportation to get you out there and get you back pretty quickly, but that project's underway, and really exciting times for us in Henry County. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I do wanna tell you, I apologize for having to take off last week, and to my son, John Christopher, sorry about the beach, buddy. We lost our beach, and it's a beach that he and I grew up on, and while I was down dealing with a hurricane in Flagler County, the board, I got intermittent emails, and I was able to do a little bit of business down there, but I do appreciate the board, and I certainly appreciate some of the comments and phone calls I got. A lot of folks in Henry County said prayers for us, and we ended up benefiting from those prayers, so thank y'all to everybody who did that, and thank the board for giving me the time off to go take care of my family business.
The beach, the beach that you lost, St. Simon's got it. The, we have one beach there, they call it East Beach, that has a big parking lot to where you park there and you go to the beach. The sand was about this thick through over half of the parking lot where it washed up from the beach.
We lost like fourteen feet and about a mile of A-1A. I, I've sent y'all some pictures.
We just lost a lot of trees. County Attorney, you have anything you wanna talk to us about?
Nothing in public session.
Okay. Does somebody move? We adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provision of OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-three and other applicable laws and pertinent to the advice of county attorney, for the purpose of, we're gonna discuss personnel issues, and we're gonna discuss potential litigation. If somebody would move, that we go into executive session. So moved. Correction, let's back up. Back up, I'm sorry. I gotta mention these meetings here, as if we don't know about them. Regular meetings, November the first at nine AM is a regular meeting, November the fifteenth at six-thirty is a regular meeting, now if somebody moves, we go into executive session. Have a motion District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, so moved.